Madam President, members of the council, thank you for allowing me to address you today. I recognize that this is an unprecedented visit and an unprecedented opportunity. I come today understanding just how difficult the decision we're asking you to make is. Not a one of you need reminding that we're in the middle of the worst economic recession in generations, like our city, families all over Los Angeles and indeed the nation, struggling to make ends meet, making tough decisions like whether or not to pay rent or prescription drugs, pay for a college tuition, or auto insurance that we're all compelled and required to have. The fact is, we can no longer afford to do everything, even those things which we have historically done and which are important to all of us, to the people who provide the services, but also to the people who receive them. I know that you all understand that before us are difficult choices. I believe, and I think you agree, that we've got to, in making those choices, focus on our core priorities, our core responsibilities. While we know that there are no easy solutions solving our budget deficit, we also know that we were sent here precisely because people expect us, in these tough times, to make the tough decisions. I believe that we must act now to do that. I believe the time is not our friend, that every day that we wait to make the tough choices will only make the choices ahead even tougher. Two months ago, I began meeting with the council leadership, and let me acknowledge the council president, chairman of budget, council member Parks, the vice chair of the Budget Committee, council member Greg Smith. Under the charter, the mayor proposes a budget; you amend, approve, or disapprove the budget. For the first time in our history, I've said that we have to collaborate in presenting this budget. And so for two and a half months, meeting with our staffs, they on an almost daily basis, we on a weekly basis, have met with the CAO and the CLA, in effort to meet this crisis head-on, and ultimately, together. And I think the council president spoke to that as I was walking in. We made a series of recommendations. We actually drafted a letter, again, heretofore unprecedented, and laid out the tough choices ahead. We did that with ERC, and let me acknowledge council member Zine, council president Protem, Perry, who's here with us. This was unanimous. All five members of the ERC, the four members of the council leadership and budget committee, all unanimously put forth these proposals. We did so even though, from time to time, we've had vigorous debate, strenuous and strong disagreements, but on this issue, we understood that the decisions ahead are the decisions that we must make if we're going to be able to resolve the financial challenges that face us and be able to make sure that we're good stewards of the reserves and the finances that we have before us. So we made these series of recommendations to the CEO, many of which were proposed by the CEO in the financial status report. And I want to thank the members for their leadership and their partnership and their hard work, and I look forward to continuing to work with them and all of you to resolve this crisis. And I want to start with what has been done to help close the current fiscal year's $212 million deficit. First of all, let me acknowledge your hard work and the tough decisions you had to make. We were facing what initially began, if you remember, if Mr. Ray Serrano is around, we initially began in November of 2008 with projections that we were facing a $200 million deficit that rose to 200 million, that went to 300 million, that went to 400 million, and then 500 million dollars. Thanks to your work and the tough decisions, thanks to the cooperation of many of the people who are here, some of whom registered their indignation when I walked in, we fashioned and crafted an E-RIP, an Early Retirement Program, that took out of the labor force, cut from our labor force about 2,400, or will cut, 2,400 employees. We did so even though we knew that the cost of an E-RIP versus layoffs was not, you know, that they're not one in the same. We did so because we said, "This is the most humane way to reduce our workforce, address the structural deficit that we face." Every one of these unions who are here today, who worked with us, to put forth, to make the kind of concessions that hereetofore, just like this is the first time that a mayor has addressed you, or at least this mayor has addressed you in this way, this is the first time that people have come together and made the kinds of concessions on a scale and scope that were made here among virtually all of our unions. We're able to resolve all of about 100 million of this deficit, and then the new revenue projections came in, and lo and behold, we now face a $212 million deficit. Last week, I ordered the elimination of 1,000 general-funded positions. Now let me just say, I come out of the labor movement 15 years prior to being elected to the state assembly. I was the president, steward, chief steward of my union. I recognize that layoffs should be looked at as a last resort. I recognize that the people here, whether they're civilian or sworn personnel, are among the finest public servants anywhere in the United States of America. I recognize that they work hard, that they put their lives on the line, that every day they provide a level and a quality of service that make every one of us here proud. So I do not order these layoffs easily. In fact, I promised in a speech to the County Federation of Labor last week, to their delegates, I said this: "I promise before I lay off or order the layoff of one individual that I'll put a face on a number, that I'll think for a moment about the single mom with three children, one of whom may have urgent healthcare needs." I recognize that when you lay people off, you're essentially putting them in a position where they can't meet their obligations, take care of their families in a way that all of us believe is essential and important. But I also recognize that we don't have a lot of options here. This process that we've ordered will begin by first transferring as many workers to vacant special-funded and proprietary department positions as possible. Why? Because we've got to move quickly, to move people from general fund to special fund to proprietary jobs. Now, some have asked, "Well, where did these positions come from?" Many of these positions were people who were E-Ripped, and these positions are now vacant. So our goal will be to move as many of them as possible. Since we announced the position eliminations and streamlined the transfer process last Thursday, more than 2,000 employees have volunteered to vacate their current positions. Thanks to the work of the Personnel Department, we expect to transfer 300 employees off the general fund this week. Now, we're also streamlining the retirement process. I've asked, we're moving as quickly as possible to remove people from the payroll on E-RIP. Now, some have asked, and rightfully so, "What's taken so long?" Well, you should know that historically, we handle about 500 retirements a year. This year, we've added personnel at the direction of many of you and of the unions who are here with us, and we're doing about 347 or so a month. We hope that another 700-plus positions will be created as a result of E-RIP. We'll want to move as many of these people, been targeted for layoffs, into those positions ultimately. But we also are asking that you quickly pass an ordinance to waive the usual 30- to 60-day advance application requirement, because there will be some people who don't qualify for E-RIP, who may want to retire now anyway. So let's expedite the process by which they could do that, so we can remove them from the payroll and minimize the number of layoffs that would be required. Finally, we are proceeding with layoffs. The layoffs I approve may or may not reflect the recommended layoffs in the financial status report. My office is working with general managers to target position eliminations and subsequent layoffs that make the most sense. I recognize that this will create a hardship and that there's a climate of trepidation among the workforce. I also know that it's important for us to face reality here. We don't take these decisions lightly, but we know ultimately layoffs will be a part of the equation. Our hope is to minimize the number, but ultimately, if you ask the CAO, the chairman of budget, the vice chair, the members of the ERC, every one of us, after extensive briefing from the CAO with the support of the CLA, have come to the conclusion, there just aren't unlimited options here. Now, I have profound respect for the difficulty of the decisions you have to make, but I want to say this: We can't continue to say no to everything. You can't say no to layoffs, no to furloughs, no to department eliminations, no to parking meters, no to parking structures, no to privatizing golf, the zoo, and the convention center, no to lending, council funds for the reserve. The fact is, we can't sustain this business model, and the status quo cannot be maintained. We're going to have to change it, and change it now. Now, just yesterday, two major credit rating agencies admonished, and I think the council president will support, actually, they did more than that. They made it absolutely clear that the city's inability to take action and take action quickly to strengthen our financial position will result in a downgrade. This is a crisis, and we must act accordingly. And in my view, the principal objective between now and the end of the fiscal year must be to close the current year's deficit while maintaining a healthy reserve fund. Now, ending the fiscal year with little or no reserves is absolutely unacceptable. Ending the year without sufficient reserves could trigger, no, let me backtrack. I just said, "Ending the year without sufficient reserves will trigger severe downgrades." See the council president moving his head. I see the, I don't know where the CAO is or his staff, but I think, I don't know where the CLA is, but I know there must be somewhere in these chambers. We all agree that if we don't move and move quickly, we're going to be downgraded, if we don't address the issue of reserves, which I know a number of you have addressed. Now, preventing this, obviously, what are some of the results of a downgrade? It would make borrowing more expensive, or in some cases impossible, which could in turn lead to an inability to meet cash flow needs in the coming year. Preventing this kind of financial tailspin is precisely why I decided to eliminate 1,000 positions, and why it is so critical that this body move forward with a public-private partnership for the management of city parking garages, a partnership which could yield between $100 and $200 million to strengthen our reserve fund. Now, I'd like to ask you to reauthorize and revisit a study on a public-private partnership for the management of our meters. Now, I agree with many of you that the Chicago deal will not work for Los Angeles. I think you all agree that. There's not a person here around this horseshoe that thinks that deal works for us. But thanks to Chicago, we have a roadmap of what not to do. We can structure our deal differently, but we have to start by approving a study that will show us how we can do it. We're simply not in a position to reject out-of-hand proposals which could yield hundreds of millions of dollars in new revenue to the city without even studying it first. And that's why I hope you move forward today on that proposal, but also on privatizing the zoo and the convention center. Most cities don't run zoos. And I've spoken with council member Labange, and he and I are passionate about that zoo. We all are. We want to, we want to figure out how we can better manage a zoo, but do it in a public-private partnership. Do it in a way that keeps that wonderful asset open and available to the public while also focusing on our core responsibilities. If you look at the convention center, we've been in the black for four years, operating. But we're not in the black with respect to the amount of money that we pay on the bonds, outstanding bonds from the convention center. Most cities don't run their own convention center. Most cities don't operate these centers. So I recognize, finally, and I make this last request with all respect, you know, some people take umbrage with the fact that there are not enough battles between the mayor and the council. And maybe one of the reasons for that is, I sat right there, where you sit, Mr. Rosendahl, and I have a great deal of respect for the work that you do, for the constituents that you represent. I recognize that council-controlled funds are used for important, important activity, for services, for programs that benefit the constituents of your districts and the city. My only request is that we borrow those funds so that we can, until such time as we can hit the 5% in our reserve, and then council can take control of those funds at the appropriate time. Now, I hear the rumblings. This is a request made with all respect, but a request that I make given the state of our reserves and given the urgency of these times. And so without, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions. I'll bring up my staff and the CAO, CLA, anybody that might be available to answer more specifically any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. First speaker will be Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much for being here. Thank you for the difficult but strong words. And I, for one, as council president, want to stand up to say how unified we are about moving forward. I think that it is very critical for us to take action, to take action quickly, and all of February is about this. So we invite you back during February at any time when you want, and if you feel certain things going on, we want this to be also your chambers, just like it's the public's chambers. I think that befits the public and the process that we're doing, and that's a standing invitation. I want to thank our financial advisors who also kind of gave us the context of this. And I also want to state very clearly that this council has said yes to a lot of painful things. We've said yes to furloughs, and yes to moving forward with parking lots, and yes to getting the mechanics of layoffs moving forward, and yes to moving council funds. A couple of questions, just in terms of the CAO's presentation that had been made to us on the financial status report. Is there anything in there that you oppose? We know that there are some very difficult things that were put in there, everything from the Department of Disability and Arts and Human Services, changing the lifeline program for trash collection. Is there anything in there that you would ask the council to change or that wasn't in there? And then secondly, I assume when you talk about council-controlled funds, because many of those mayor funds that the mayor's office also have, you're talking about the collective funds that we have. I'm personally interested in not just borrowing, but giving those funds. I think that's much more important when we have jobs on the line. But the percentage that we arrive at has to be an important one. And we're going to be having that discussion, I believe, on Thursday in this council. But I assume too that things like general city purposes, you're talking about all of our funds, both mayor and council-controlled.
Yes. Let me, let me respond to that, Mr. President. And first of all, let me respond to your invitation to speak here. I respect the legislative functions of this council. I am the chief executive of this city, and I believe it is important to be here, particularly in extraordinary times, but I would dilute the extraordinary nature of my request if I were to come on a weekly basis. I am here today because the urgency of now is not just knocking on our door, but breaking the door down. With respect to the council-controlled funds, you said that you'd be willing to support more than a loan. I would as well. But what I ask you to do at this point is to loan the money. With respect to my funds, I have taken a 10% cut. On a per capita basis, I lead last year voluntary furloughs. In fact, my office took 10 times the furloughs that this body did. 10 times the furloughs. I am willing to cut. I am willing to address those funds that you identify. I think we can, we already have, agreed that in the coming year, we will take cuts in both your funds and ours, and if we all believe that we should take a higher percentage, I would be supportive of that as well.
And just two points, just to follow up. For anybody who's listening, we also took the same amount of dollar cuts as a percentage. Different people did it in different ways around the council. Instead of furloughs, some had staff that they laid off, others had positions that they held vacant, others cut money, and now there's furloughs that are going on in this council as well. And we've taken a 25% cut, which was the exact same as the mayor's, so there hasn't been disunity on that point. Specifically, I wasn't talking about our office budgets as much as the funds that we control. There's mayoral GCP funds, just like there's council GCP funds. So I assume we're all on the same page in this, and I know that you feel passionately about this. I just, before anybody out there said, "Oh, this is just stuff that the council controls. It also goes through, and there's mayoral signatures on them." We want to do that together. So I assumed it was a unified point, that you two on mayor-controlled GCP funds and others would make the same sort of commitments on a loan or give as well. And then just the last thing on the financial status report, was there anything in there that you didn't support?
Yeah.
Because I think, you know, I want this council to hear loud and clear where you are on that.
I'm going to address that.
Mr. Alarcon.
Oh, hold on, he's answering.
I'm going to address, I'm going to address that. The, as I, in my preparatory remarks, I acknowledged the ERC and the council leadership who we've been meeting with. As you know, we all approved the general thrust of the FSR. Every specific line in there, I think you and I have discussed, there may be places where we want to tinker. Do we believe, do I support the elimination of the smaller departments, including Disability, Human Services, Environmental Affairs, for one? Yes, I support the elimination of those departments, but I think you and I have talked about, we can still provide some of the functions of those departments. What we want to extricate ourselves is the bureaucracy that comes with performing those functions. So you and I, and that committee, have been, are trying to figure out what's the best way to provide as many of those services as possible without keeping, without maintaining the departments. So there are, there are small areas where there's disagreement, or not consonance here, but there are areas that you and I have already said that we think we can work through. And so to name those three departments, yes, I do. As an example, I think we've also talked about, we may, not every, that doesn't mean that every individual will be laid off. Maybe some of the people that were identified are not people that we agree, but the elimination of those departments, yes, I do support.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. You complete? We'll move on to Mr. Alarcon. We'll move on to Mr. Alarcon.
Mr. Mayor, first of all, thank you for being here. To have the dialogue directly with you, instead of, in the full public view, instead of having communication through the newspapers, is, I think, going to produce the best result. So, we appreciate your attendance and having this discussion with us directly. There's, I don't think there's a member on the council who disagrees with you that we have to reduce our workforce. There may be differences of opinion on how big the gap is, but not by much. We essentially concur with the CAO's analysis of how much money is a shortfall. The real question is, how do we reduce that shortfall? And the layoff word is clearly, it's a dirty word to you, it's a dirty word to us. We don't like to go there if we can avoid it. So, I think that every member who's spoken on this issue has been very clear. It's the last thing we want to do. And if we do do it, we want to be absolutely certain that we've turned over every revenue stone that exists in order to avoid layoffs. And so, I want to commit. Let me also say that, I read your executive order, and it talks about the elimination of positions, and it's under the heading of layoffs, but it doesn't say that the only way to eliminate those positions is layoffs. So, I want to clarify, my interpretation of that is... Okay, I want you to be clear, that was the mayor's executive order. I do not believe he is calling for 1,000 layoffs. He is calling for the elimination of 1,000 positions. I believe we can find those positions, or at least hundreds of those positions, and prevent 1,000 layoffs, and prevent even most of those layoffs. And hopefully, eliminate every single one of them. But let me tell you where I will focus my attention. I accept your challenge. As chair of the jobs committee, today we had a hearing on the ARA dollars. Just as one example, I met with the general manager, David Freeman, and asked him about one grant, a $60 million grant. That grant, recovery money, will create 200 jobs. And I asked him, "How many of those jobs can be city jobs?" And he said he didn't know, but he's going to go back and check. If we created 50 jobs out of that, that's 50 jobs we can eliminate.
I agree with you.
Now, we are, every single department is applying for ARA money. If every department could find just 20 jobs, we're halfway there. And so, I would offer, I will bring in every general manager to try and find jobs for every layoff that is proposed. Secondly, the uncollected debt, my time is up, but let's just say, I believe we need to put a figure on how much money we're going to collect in the uncollected debt next year. We know it's 400 million in uncollected debt. The industry ratio is 15%, but even if we collected just 10% of that, that's $40 million we could increase our general fund by next year. I believe there are other sources of revenue that we can generate, but we have to sharpen our pencils and be committed to it. We are committed to closing this gap, but we don't believe that, there is a group of us on the council that do not believe that we have to resort to layoffs at the end of the day. I understand the position you're in. I accept, I accept the notion of the elimination of 1,000 positions as a challenge, a challenge to the council in cooperation with your office, to try and find the revenue to meet those objectives so that we can avoid layoffs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alarcon. Mr. Mayor, if you want to respond. Mr. Mayor? And if I could ask the audience, I'm sure that Mr. Alarcon appreciates the applause, but we'd like to be able to move forward. Mr. Mayor, if you would like to respond.
Yes. First of all, I want to acknowledge that council member Alarcon is correct. Our hope is, through either transfers, 360, we believe that of the 1,000 positions, 360 of them can be filled through transfer. I think there's another 780 positions or so that will be opened up through E-RIP over But the proposal for 1,000 layoffs is to address the $212 million current-year deficit. Next year, next year, we're looking at a $480 million deficit. Some of the people that have been identified for layoff may not get laid off between now and July 1st because of contractual obligations that we have. But we know that the process of layoff takes months and months. And so, we're identifying people now, and will continue to identify. While I agree with you that we should all look for revenues, and I know that the city is owed approximately $496 million, and the majority of which comes from bad debt, on ambulance billing at $190 million, and parking citations at $210 million. The Controller's Office has contracted Macias Consulting Group for recommendations on how to proceed. Phase one, they're expanding billing and collection reporting and performance management over a period of 18 months. Phase two, they'll be giving direct bill generation, issuance, and collection, including billing monitoring and oversight to the Office of Finance for bills with similar processes and high levels of outstanding collections, where overall, I think the estimate is that a net increase of revenues of approximately $274 million can be generated, but over a six-year period of time. Councilmember Alarcon, I agree with you, our goal has to be to minimize the number of layoffs. I do not see a scenario where there will not be layoffs, not only in this year, but next year as well. And particularly next year, when we're looking at a $480 million deficit. I think council president said it very well. This council, and I said it before you did, I recognize that you have made tough decisions, and I agree with you, that layoff is the last resort. But here's an example, and that's why I said, we can't say no to depleting the reserve, no to using council and mayor-controlled funds, as you said, no to layoffs, no to cuts in personnel, no to elimination of departments, no to the limited menu of options. There aren't unlimited menu of options here. And I agree with you, and I think by the applause that you received, everybody agrees with you, the last resort should be layoffs. I don't, when you look at what we're facing here, here's an example, furloughs. Furloughs only deal with the current year. They don't address the structural deficit. The only way to address the structural deficit is to reduce the payroll on a permanent basis. One of the things we've said we should look at is the issue of pensions. We know that the $1.8 billion that's estimated to be the deficit, if we don't do anything now, that number could be much smaller if we address the crisis now, that the $1.8 billion deficit over the next three years, in no small part, is caused by the losses in the markets and the pension obligations that we have. Again, we can't say no to layoffs, no to increased pensions, no to reductions in benefits, no to elimination of departments. We don't have an unlimited number of options here.
Mr. Carruthers.
Yes. Whatever you, yeah.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for being here to join in our efforts to resolve this problem together. I'm on the side that would be in agreement with Mr. Alarcon, that layoffs, layoffs should be an absolute last resort, and for me, that doesn't include even talking about some layoffs as a certainty. I think we need to focus on the goal of avoiding layoffs. I'm not going to say no to everything that we're talking about to save money, but layoffs are my absolute last choice. And I think if it's everyone's last choice, we can get there. Now, I think in a way, we're not exactly having this conversation in a vacuum, but we're not addressing the efficiencies that the council has talked about in the last couple of weeks, the multiple revenue sources that the council has talked about in the last few weeks, and cuts in places other than what you and the CAO have proposed, such as reducing the unsustainable level of police officers in the LAPD by continuing to hire when every single other city in the country has at least stopped hiring. It makes no sense at all. Now, I submitted to the CAO a list of 60 revenue sources and efficiencies, and that captured the couple of things Mr. Alarcon spoke about earlier, every other good suggestion that's been made here on the council floor. And according to my calculations, it could bring in as much as $500 million to $1 billion. Now, those numbers have not yet been scrubbed by the CAO, or at least we haven't seen them, maybe we'll see them tomorrow. But to me, it makes no sense to cut first today and then see what the potential revenues and efficiencies and other places to cut are tomorrow. I think it makes sense to do it in reverse. Let's see what the opportunities are. I mean, we all know some that will bring in large amounts of dollars, certainly what Mr. Alarcon mentioned were some. One of my suggestions is a very obvious one, which is, we ask all our contractors to take a voluntary 10% cut right now. Now, if we just... Not every one of those are going to do it, so we're not going to save $150 million, but we'll save some significant number of tens of millions of dollars. We need to look at all of these in the aggregate and say, "Well, is this really still a $500 million problem, or is it a $100 million problem next year after we do every single thing that we need to?" And, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you've really given a close look to that as well, but I hope that you would.
Let me correct. Thank you. Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Carruthers, you said that this was something that I and the CAO, this is something that councilmember Smith, councilmember Perry, councilmember Parks, council president Garcetti, and councilmember Zein have all signed off on. And I agree with you that we need to look for revenues. The 218 revenues that you're talking about require two-thirds vote of the people. To put them on the ballot, at the earliest, we'll be able to put them on the ballot in November. I am here today because, based on the best estimate of the CAO and the CLA, the budget, committee leaders, and the ERC, we will not be able to meet our obligations sometime in the summer if we don't act now. I agree with you 100% that ultimately, revenues have to be part of the equation here. We have, we've taken your suggestion, and actually, the ERC had already addressed this, just so that you know, to do the 10%. We're already in the process of doing that. We hope that it will reap and generate a great deal of money, but I think, as you said, they're not compelled to do this, and so, we'll see. We, with respect to some of the other issues you raised, virtually all of the recommendations of the council has been forwarded through the ERC to the CAO and said, "Let's go after this. Let's look at this, too." Mr. Zein was also a leader of the PPL prior to getting elected. Virtually everybody on the ERC and on the Budget Committee have had, historically anyway, a very positive relationship with labor. The problem that we face now, if we don't move quickly, to move as many people, and as councilmember Alarcon said, it could be through transfer to special funded, it could be through E-RIP or regular retirement. If we don't move quickly to reduce the size of the workforce, the, we will be compelled to lay off people in even greater numbers in the future. And I want to be as clear as possible. The layoffs that I've ordered are just the beginning unless we make these decisions We can always, as an example, it takes months to lay people off ultimately, maybe even, you know, I mean, it takes a very long time. It may be that some of the revenues that Mr. Carruthers and Mr. Alarcon have mentioned might be able to generate more than we're estimating right now, and then we can put a stop ultimately to those layoffs. But if we don't move on them now, the time that it takes to lay off will put us in a position that is untenable, because it will, it will make us, it will put us in a position where we may not be able to meet our obligations. Now, I will, and, you know, I recognize that not everybody feels as strongly as I do about public safety. Some are more passionate, maybe? Some are passionate but believe in these times that we can't continue to hire for attrition. Now, we were growing our police department, made a compact with the people of this city when we raised our trash fees, to be able to put ourselves in a position to move ahead from the most under-police big city in the United States of America to a city that has a police department that has the resources that we need to continue to drive crime down. Earlier this year, working with the council leadership and you all, we stopped growing the police department. We decided to just hire for attrition. It took us four years in the most aggressive recruitment our city has ever seen to hire 800 officers. If we cut police hiring, in one year, we can eviscerate the gains that we made over those four years. And it will take four years and more to be able to bring us back. With respect, however, we all agreed, we asked the Police Protective League, our police officers, to defer overtime. The force and effect of that is that over time, we'll be removing 600 officers from the street, because that overtime is essentially asking people to work more hours and increasing the size of our police department without paying the pensions and other obligations that come with it. So, we... So we reduced it by 600 at a time when, as Mr. Zine has very eloquently stated over the last few months, when the state is going to be releasing prisoners by the thousands from our state prisons. So on this issue, we disagree, certainly recognize that reasonable people who are passionate about public safety can disagree on this issue, but this is an issue where I've said that when you identify what the core responsibilities and the core priorities are, public safety has to come first. It just does.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For those council members who need to direct comments or questions to the mayor, I'd like for them to do that. We need to be respectful of the mayor's time, and we need to get back to talking with the staff, too. So, Mr. Reyes is next on the queue for question to the mayor?
Yes. Thank you, Madam President, and again, thank you, Mayor, for being here with us in very critical times. The comments you just made are very timely. As a council member, I go into my district, and what's posed to me is a question, and I've raised it before when we did the grand opening over in the Hollenbach Station. And I get folks who tell me, you know, "Councilman, what kind of city are we going to be? You're focused on police, you and the mayor keep talking about the police, but what kind of city are we going to be when we walk around with a big stick with no other programs or services to address the needs of our youth?" And... I, believing in all disrespect to the audience, I don't say that to get an applause.
I know.
I say it because I think we are all challenged as council members, along with the mayor, to look at how we fill these gaps. The other day, we canceled a Wells Fargo announcement on the City Nightlights program. Last week, I had the privilege of working with the Dodgers and using Prop K funds, thanks to the voters, along with the city, to redo a ball field in Lincoln Heights at the Boys and Girls Club. But I really think it's upon us all, in this demonstration of unity, that we seek out these private partners to fill that gap, because I think it's upon us. In my district, we built close to 80 acres of park space, but now with the state budget cuts, now with the cuts for the city, this is going to be open space for whom? Who's going to run them? What kind of programs are we going to have? So I say this as a city, we need to challenge each other instead of attacking and saying or using these opportunities for political football-playing and manipulation, it's really about what happens to our kids, what happens to our families in these parks. So, Mayor, I agree with you about the public safety issue and the police, but at the same time, we need to hold as a high priority how we cultivate these partnerships to take care of our parks, our libraries, all those elements that nurture that youth, that keeps them from joining these gangs and falling into the prisons and the dead ends that, at this stage, Lincoln High School, we have 40% of the classes not graduating. That's a student body of 2,700. That's one high school. I've got five high schools, one in construction. What happens to those kids? So, to me, I say this with the challenge that we need to look at this immediate need, we need to make this decision now, but we need to build up these partnerships and really look at each one of our roles, and, Mayor, I think you probably have the brightest light that shines from the city hall, that's cast along the city, and bring in those private sector partnerships, because the private sector is making money off of this city, and there is that relation that we need to build up. I look forward to doing that with you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
I concur and agree with everything you said. I think we're going to have to look at not just public-private partnerships to operate garages and convention centers and the zoo, parking structures with parking meters, but also public-private partnerships, you know, with philanthropy, and Eileen Adams is working on just that, working with all of you. We've got to say to the corporate community in this town that in these tough times, we need to partner with them to make sure our libraries are open, our parks are open, and that we have the resources there, and we're going to ask them to step up in a more aggressive way than they have in the past. It's essential, so there's nothing I disagree with, you said.
Mr. Cardenas? This is for the question for the mayor?
You got it. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Mayor Vieregosa, you and I have now worked together for, geez, about a dozen years now, both in the legislature, here on the council, and now in your capacity as the executive and myself as a council member. Some of the things I'd like to point out in the interest of having clarity of how we're operating together and working together and communicating as a policymaking body and as the mayor as well, is the press conference that you had last week, it was no surprise that there were going to be headlines like this one on the LA Times, "Vieregosa Sets Side on City Council's Pet Projects," "Mayor to Urge Council to Reduce Budget Deficit," et cetera. Some of those headlines, good, constructive, some of them not so constructive as far as what the press says or how they take the dialogue that we may have publicly or privately, but the one thing that I can't stand is when we find ourselves having to respond to or having to placate the rumors and murmurs out there in the community when, I think, irresponsible headlines like them focusing on only the council pet projects, when we have $200 million in this current year that we need to work together on, and close to half a billion dollars next year that we need to cut for next year. So I think one thing I want to remind everybody, some of you have seen Mayor Vieregosa and I deliberate in public, and sometimes you see passion coming out of both of us or what have you. If you and I were brothers, Mayor, we'd probably be those brothers who mom and dad would say, "God, can't these two just get along?" However, however, when you look, when you look at, when the rubber meets the road, we do things very much the same. When you look at your vote in the legislature and my vote in the legislature, probably 90-some percent identical. When you look at the organizations you're passionate about and I'm passionate about, 90-some percent identical. So with that, I'm forced to remind the public that when the headlines try to make it seem like the council's not doing its share or its part, for example, in this current budget year, I have already laid off bodies from my office. All this budget year, myself and my staff are doing furloughs. So the bottom line is, we do take this seriously, and we are, in fact, doing our part, all of us in different ways, but we are contributing. Also, the headlines of the newspapers, there's an organization here today, Gardener Underwood and Bacon, they did a report showing that the actions of the council on one particular vote saved us $5 million, although there were four articles between the Daily News and LA Times accusing us that our actions were going to cost the city over $20 million, and that didn't happen. So the council does make a lot of great decisions, and at the same time, there are many tremendous decisions we have to make today. One of the things that I want to focus on, because I'm limited in time, I'll jump to this, and that is that crime has gone down close to 10 years in a row in the state and in the city, especially when it comes to juveniles. We've moved a tremendous amount of that responsibility over the mayor's office, and you've been doing a great job, but we all know we have much more to do, because too many of our young bodies are ending up dead on the streets of Los Angeles. However, the vast majority of juvenile crimes, we all know, take place between 3:00 and 7:00 p.m. If we focus on some of our smallest, most vulnerable departments, like the departments that have to do with women, children, and the disabled, with all due respect, I think we're making it too easy on ourselves, and we're making it too difficult on our most needy communities and our most vulnerable populations, but what we need to also remind ourselves, as I think what I interpret Councilmember Reyes was pointing toward, and that is that crime has come down not only because of the police department, crime has come down because we have a panoply of responsibilities that we take care of, because public safety is not a monolithic responsibility. It is a responsibility where children have to have a safe place to be so they're not hanging out on the streets, so that our children have arts and crafts and music and those kinds of things to stimulate their mind and get them to want to be something other than a gang member. Those are the things that we have to be responsible for. So with all due respect, when we get attacked by the papers or other outside entities or anybody in this city, because this council didn't take action by cutting a few million dollars out of our most vulnerable departments that serve the most vulnerable populations, I don't think that was an act of cowardice, I think that was an act of courage, because we knew those articles were coming, we knew those attacks were coming, and we will cut $200 million out of this year's budget, and we will cut a half a billion dollars out of next year's budget, even if we have to come day after day after day into these council chambers and do it. So with that, let's continue to work together, Mayor, and please, let's be mindful of the fact of those people that say, "Oh, great, a fight, a fight, a mayor and a council."
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas, and again, we have to be respectful of the mayor's time, and like we...
But let me just, if I can, Madam President, you know, Councilmember Cardenas knows, because I've said to him, I love his passion, and I share that passion for people, and particularly people who don't have a voice. With respect to the newspapers, you know, I wish I, I wish I could write those headlines, those editorials, but, or even, what do I write under the headlines, what do I, the subheads, you know, and I wish I could put my byline to some of them. You know, I was amazed that, that there was such an effort to pit the council with the mayor. And the fact is, I'm here today respectfully addressing you, knowing that you have tough decisions, and I agree with both you and Councilmember Reyes, we've got to continue to provide a safety net of services, whether it's gang reduction efforts, which we've expanded even during tough times together, whether it's our libraries, and by the way, our libraries have been expanded beyond any time heretofore by you. You approved. I proposed, but you approved, and we've continued to make libraries and parks a priority. I agree that we're not going to eviscerate those departments. Again, the way to eliminate layoffs, if we could take cuts, if we could increase pensions, take cuts, not deferrals, but cuts, we could minimize the number of layoffs, so we wouldn't have to decimate these departments. And then, just with respect to the four departments that I mentioned, I agree with you, the functions of those departments, we want to work to continue to provide, maybe not to the extent, but continue to provide, just not maintain the bureaucracy supporting them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and as we say to our own constituents in our own public meetings, Mr. Weezer, what is your question?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, and I'll keep this brief. Mr. Mayor, thank you, first of all, for coming here, shows the seriousness of the matter that's before this council and this whole city of Los Angeles. I think we will all acknowledge that we have three problems before us as it relates to the budget. First is the immediate deficit of $200 million that affects this fiscal year. Second is the deficit of $400 million that affects next fiscal year, and third is the structural deficit that the city has faced for many, many years. My concern all along, since last week, when we were first told of the proposals to cut, our leadership may have known about it, but many of us who saw it for the first time had to deliberate and be thoughtful about which direction we were going to go. And let me tell you that my concern is that we really don't have a plan to deal with this year's fiscal deficit that we face. We have a 200, most of the proposals that are on the table are really dealing with next year's fiscal year. We have 1,000 layoffs that are being proposed, where we have realized $65 million for next year's fiscal year, $15 million for this year. My concern is this, the proposal before us is depending upon us to deplete our reserves, and we've been warned by the Controller's Office that if we do that and we don't resolve that quickly, as you mentioned, we won't be able to sell our tram, we won't be able to dip in for cash when we needed to pay our bills, and that's going to be, that'll put the city in a very tense situation next year. And the solution to replenish those are the leasing of the 10 parking structures. Now, that's the only plan we have before us. I think you stepped forward with a very creative one, which is, "Council, look at your own discretionary funds to see if we could take care of this year's problems." That's the type of options we need to see more of, and I'm not only addressing this to you, but to all of us, because this year's the real problem. The urgency that Fitch Ratings is talking about is mostly directed at this year.
Counselor, if you could counsel...
My question is this, every year when we propose a budget, we hear about this, we hear about Fitch's concerns, you know, are you cutting or not? Are you making those tough decisions or not? And let me tell you, we all have, these last few years, made some very difficult decisions. But my question is this, how will we deal with this year's fiscal deficit if we do not move forward with the leases? And I, this is a question that I also asked CAO, and honestly, none of us have an answer to that.
Remember, you all made, look, you all made those tough decisions when we cut 400 of the $500 million deficit that we were facing. Then revenues went down 185 million from what they were projected. We found that out in December. That's when we got together on an emergency basis. You're right, we're looking to the reserve fund to help us with meeting that $212 million deficit. We're looking for $15 million in layoffs this fiscal year, $28 million from the Fire Hydrant Trust Fund, $32 million from judgment obligation bonds, the $40 million loan from the discretionary funds, council control funds, and then at least $100 million from the parking structure revenue. If we approve the study, we can also see what parking meters can bring us. We know that parking meters will generate more money than parking structures, but just without that, we're looking at a final reserve fund of $192 million. Now, that still means we have next year, but we have some breathing room. That's why I've said, and I've been very clear, that I, that I'll be proposing more layoffs now, because if we don't get that process started, we'll be looking at depleting the reserve fund a second time, going, these are all, a lot of these, some of these areas are one time. Some of these areas are one time, which is why we're going to the reserve at this point. But, you know, look, I agree with you that depleting these reserves is unacceptable. That's why I've asked for the following items to help us maintain a reserve. We'll have to make these tough decisions, we'll look at revenue, including 218, we'll work with some of our partners who are in the chamber right now to put some of those things on the ballot, but they're going to take time. And ultimately, I just don't want anybody to believe that some layoffs will not be part of the equation.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Mr. Rosendahl, you had a long career in television, so I'm going to ask you upfront to state your question.
Indeed. First of all, thanks for the television here. This is the best interaction in the history of our budget issues, and I thank you very much for coming here, taking questions from us day in and day out. This is very healthy for the democracy, probably the healthiest thing we've done on the budget so far, is this discussion here right now. Here's my big question. Since I got on the council, the whole thing has been structural deficit. Every year, it gets worse and worse. That's one of the reasons we're in this tight situation where we have to possibly lay off people, okay? It's the pension plan. I had a woman call me yesterday screaming at me on the phone, because it looked like Rosendahl wanted to do a parcel tax. I don't want to do a tax. What I want to do is put a ballot measure that opens up a discussion... What I want to do is put a ballot measure that opens up a discussion on the existing pension program. The problem is, the structural deficit of pensions and health care are beyond our ability to provide services. When I talked to the constituent, she said, "I can't do this, I can't do that." She said, "I can't bail out the government. The government's there to serve me and provide services." So we're at that loggerhead. So what would you propose for the November ballot in terms of opening up the pensions and the health care discussion so that the people can weigh in on that? And what impact would that have on our structural deficit?
I want to begin by negotiating with our labor partners to see if we can get a consensus around reducing payroll, taking cuts, addressing our pension liabilities, and our benefit obligations. I want to do it in a way that establishes from the beginning, I am not someone who wants to, who doesn't believe in government. I believe in government. I believe that the people that do the work back here provide a service for this city. But in these times, we cannot afford to provide the services at the cost that we're currently providing them. As an example, we may be able to negotiate that the increased pension contribution is temporary till we get out of the crisis, may be able to negotiate that instead of deferring pay raises, we're going to only defer some of it and not the rest. The rest, take a cut. There are a number of options that we could employ that will reduce the number of layoffs. Ultimately, though, there will be some, even with revenue generation, even with cuts, just because the size of the problem over the next three years is as big as it is. My hope is that we'll be able to do this. You know, people, and it's a testament to all of you, nobody believed that our partners here would defer their pay raises, and they did. Nobody believed that we could work to reduce the deficit that we face, and I think Councilman Cardenas said it about as well as anybody. He said to the rating agencies a couple of minutes ago, "We will reduce this current year deficit, and we will reduce next year's as well." I believe that to be true. I would not be here wasting my breath or your time if I believed that the council isn't prepared to make the tough decisions. My only, my only request is that you understand the urgency. Every day we wait, every week we wait will add to the total cost of the magnitude of the deficit before us. So my hope is, in terms of putting it on the ballot, if we agreed, we could do it by ordinance. We wouldn't have to put it on the ballot, except for sworn. If we all agreed, we could negotiate a number of these things. But, you know, it's interesting. Prior to the order to layoff, we didn't have 2,000 people requesting transfer. Now we do. There's a connection here, everybody. There are a limited number of options. If people don't want layoffs, and I agree with all of you, Councilmembers Alacan and Corretts, who most eloquently spoke to that, I agree, but all I said in the beginning of my statements were, "You can't say no to all the options."
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have two more speakers for the first time, Mr. Labange and Mr. Zine, who I assume have questions. The rest of the speakers have already spoken once that are coming up.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Hold on, Mr. Labange, for the second time. So what I am going to suggest, unless the second-time speakers want to speak directly to the mayor, that we stop the discussion at the first-time speakers, and then allow the mayor to leave the chamber, and then we will go into the second round of speakers. Have you spoken, you've spoken for the first, you've spoken one time. So all of, okay, the speakers who are on the queue for the second time are Parks, Smith, Corretts, and Han. I will put up those people who want to ask questions of the mayor. And if it's all of you, if that's what you want, then you can all speak to the mayor. But I would request that you ask the mayor questions.
Hold on. Point of clarity: The one thing I think for Mr. Smith and myself, we opened up the discussion before the mayor got here. So to be pushed back on all of these conversations when he's here and then say, "We're going to cut it short just because he's leaving..."
Thank you, Madam President. I am prepared to respond to the questions of all the people who haven't...
All right, fine. Then we'll have everybody who's in the queue ask the mayor questions. Mr. Labange, Mr. Zine, Mr. Parks, Mr. Smith, Mr. Corretts, and Ms. Han. Mr. Labange, you're up next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You're prepared to take back the Office of Youth Development, Children, Youth and Family, offices that historically were in Mayor Bradley's office that were created in a department? You're prepared to look at that?
Look, we'll look at all of the options, and you and I talked about this last night. It may be that would be the best place. It could be CDD. Certainly work with all of you, and particularly with the council leadership.
I just want to say I support the mayor's office. And when someone calls and says, "I'm with the mayor's office of youth development," they're going to listen louder than if they're from a department. So I support that. I came for Mayor Bradley's Youth Commission, which Olivia Mitchell ran on the 21st floor. So I want that power in the mayor's office because it will help the city. That's what we all want to do. And I also want to say, it's all about public safety and public works. It's a combined effort of us. If you ask the constituents, yes, strong support for fire and police, but strong support for roads, streets, sewers, et cetera. So I just want to say that. But the reality is, as you know, we have to reduce, retool, reorganize, and I would support reorganizing public works. I think it's real key. The county has a plan that has worked, and I know Miguel, who's right there, has looked at some of those options, to look at it. And we all talk about development in the city, and how do you feel about this, Mr. Mayor? We have a transportation department, we have a planning department, but sometimes they don't think, should we took some brains out of the, excuse me, some thoughts out of the transportation department and compile them with thoughts in the planning department in some way to do that, and take the mechanical part out of transportation and put it in public works? Should we look at some of those things?
Absolutely.
I think it's real key. And lastly, thank you for your belief in me on issue of Parks and Arts and the Zoo. Our cultural affairs raised $7 million in partnership, much to your help and leadership that you gave, and entrusted the general manager to do that with Mr. Mukri and our foundation for our park system, which Mary Sanders started, with the library at the foundation. And you have a library card, right, Mr. Mayor? Do you have a Costco card?
No.
Let me just ask a question. This is a tough question. It's a serious question. Should we ask, and Ms. Han had this idea when we were on committee together, that you take your library card and you ask, it's free to everybody, it should remain free, but at the same time, maybe we ask them, "If you have a Costco card, okay?"
Okay.
Wait a second. This is important, Ms. Perry.
Question.
Would one be in the city, say, "I want to support the library hours, and I'll give 50 bucks of mine self to have the honor of having a card." Now, if you don't, if you don't, a gold card, something like this would be helpful to enlist it, because people do want to support the city. And that's a way to enlist them to raise revenue. I don't want to raise revenue on the backs of the people who live in the densely populated area that get constantly ticketed, but at the same time, I want to make sure it's fair. And on the issue of the zoo, the Greater Los Angeles Zoo Association has done tremendous work. And we'll always own the zoo, like the county always owns the Hollywood Bowl, like the county always owns the Disney Hall. But there's a partnership with the Philharmonic, there's a partnership with the Greater Los Angeles Zoo Association. So I thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for coming here, and I want to be a partner to you, for you. You used to sit here, you know this city, you know how tough it is, and you know about people. And I know we're in very difficult times, and I think of these columns that were here when this building was built, went through great difficult times in the Depression of the '30s. We will make it, but we'll try to make it best for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you for your question, Mr. Labange. Thank you. Yes. Mr. Zine, your question, please.
Thank you. I'll take my three minutes in comments and questions. I want to publicly admit that the mayor is not the villain. I remember when you were elected as mayor, there were cheers around the city. Your leadership was going to turn the city around. So when people boo you, those are some of the same people who cheered you. You are not the villain. When it comes to sacrifice, we've all got to make sacrifice. It's a tight situation throughout America. There's no question about that. Fire Department doesn't have a contract. We're trying to get that resolved. Police Department has a contract with no salary increase. When I see some of the city workers here, you're dedicated city workers. I started as a student worker, went to the LAPD and alma councilman. I've been in your shoes, I know what you folks go through. No one wants to see people disenfranchised. Janice Han said it. None of us want to see anyone laid off. We want to see it work for everyone, for the people who receive the services from all of you. The collection of taxes, I will tell you, Mr. Mayor, I am not in favor of any additional taxes. Nine and three-quarter percent is way too much. People are already squawking about that. So I, as one, and the Valley folks are saying, no additional taxes. The obligation to the city, we need to identify those obligations. You mentioned the police, public safety. I've mentioned 40,000 people coming out of prison. We need to keep our city safe. When it comes to sanitation, erects in parks, and cultural affairs, everyone who's come before us wants to keep those departments whole. I don't see how we can keep everyone whole without making some sacrifices. And we are at 8 o'clock in the morning on Tuesday mornings, meeting EERC, trying to resolve this issue. So no one's sitting on their hands, not addressing these issues, trying to make it happen. And the consolidation, I'm supporting consolidation in many departments. I think you've made some of those progress, but as far as fillows, if we have to do something to maintain the workforce, but at the same time, I don't know if we've identified the basic essential required services. We've got to pick up the trash. We've got to keep the streets moving. Those essential services that we provide, once we have those done, we can look at the other issues. And I just want to say, have we come down to a priority of the basic essential services that we have to provide, and not the whole basket that we currently do for the city of Los Angeles? If you could answer that one, please, sir.
Well, I think I've made it clear that I believe that our number-one responsibility is public safety, police and fire. But, you know, I agree that we need parks and libraries, that we need to provide sanitation, which is, one could argue, as close to public safety as anything. Street services are all core responsibilities. I think Councilmember Labange said it. I think we, in addition to the four departments that we're eliminating here, there may be department consolidation. Remember, eliminating departments, not necessarily all of the function. We'll still be providing much of the function here, but with respect to some of these consolidations, I think we need to look at them. I mean, you're right. And I heard a board to on it, but the county is providing some of these services, and they do it in a different way. And their cost ratio is lower than ours, and we're going to have to look at that. And again, particularly where people have said that the last resort should be layoffs. But then we've got to look at privatizing golf courses and parking meters and parking structures and the convention center, and yes, consolidations, and yes, I mean, we can't say no to all of it, is my main point. So those are some of the priorities.
If I can just close by saying, I also want to acknowledge...
I'm sorry, because the mayor does have to leave, and there's two, three people. I'm sorry.
Just one statement.
I'll let you do it afterwards.
Participation assistance. Acknowledge the unions for helping us make this work.
Mr. Parks.
No, I want to make a statement first. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for being here, and particularly your comments about how grave the situation is and how long it's going to take to get resolved. One of the things, I just have a comment and then two questions. My comment is that, and one of the things I think you've seen when you were on the council, when we get in this business of trying to decide who has more passion than the other, we often get off track. And so I don't know of anyone in my 40-plus years that said, "We have to have less police officers, we should mistreat our public, we should mistreat our employees." So I would hope that collectively we could come to grips with, our passion collectively should be to have a solvent city, and move from that point on, and all the mechanics that get there become secondary to a solvent city, and that's number one. Number two is that, one of the things I think I'd like you to readdress, because I hope it doesn't get lost on the public, those in the chambers, and even my colleagues, is that the largeness of the problem, and you've assessed it, as to whether, no matter what we do, if we find more money, if we're able to fill the gap on debt, if we're able to move people in positions, where does layoffs fit into that equation after we've done all that? And how do we get compromise because of the time lag? That's number one. Number two is, and I don't think you'd ever...
Can I deal with number one first before...
Now, you're going to make me forget. Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
I forget more than you do. Let me just say, Ms. Chairman, that I agree with you. You don't see me here pointing fingers at anybody. I recognize that we're all passionate about the services that we provide and understand the, I think there's a general consensus around priorities, maybe a difference of opinion about how we treat those priorities, but there's a general consensus about priorities. With respect to clarifying the role of layoffs, there is no situation, none, that exists where layoffs will not be a part of the solution here. None. Layoffs will be a part of the resolution of this three-year deficit. Now, that's the clarification. As has been mentioned here, there are revenue options, there are collection options, there are consolidation, there's cuts that we could take, there are pension changes that we could make that can reduce that number greatly.
That's right.
But in the end, layoffs are going to be a part of the option.
The other thing is, and you would never say this in public, in the sense, but you say it in private, you've never touched publicly on the liability issue that comes with not managing the city well. And what are options if you don't manage the city well?
Okay. I'm glad that you were surgical in, I am personally liable. Should the city ever be in a position where we could not meet our obligations? But I make these proposals not just because I'm personally liable. I think we all feel liable here. I make these decisions because of the urgency of these times, and because I recognize that not being in that position, that being in the position of not being able to meet our obligations is an untenable and unacceptable position to be in. What happens, in answer to your question, should we be in that position? There would be others who would make those decisions for us.
You're right.
I am not prepared, and I know this body is not prepared. You've all spoken eloquently to it. I am not prepared to cede that authority to anyone, even if it means that some will vilify me and these decisions. I recognize that I've got a great job, and that there's a big responsibility that comes with this great job, and I am prepared to move ahead. But even if I were to move ahead on these and other layoffs, unless we act together as quickly as possible to avoid the magnitude of these layoffs, to implement the decisions that need to take place to bring in the revenue around convention center, parking meters, parking garages, every, you know, the 218 issues that I guess Councilmember Alacan spoke to, I'm prepared to get behind some of those, even if it means, Mr. Zine, that some people are going to take umbrage with that. I think we've got to look at all of those things. But to be clear, yes, layoffs have to be a part of, just because of the magnitude of the problem ahead... of the problem ahead, yes, if we were ever in a position, a position that I believe we will never be in, but if we were ever in that position, I am personally liable, and importantly, other people will make those decisions for us.
We have two last speakers, the mayor really does need to go, Mr. Smith and Ms. Han, briefly.
Thank you very much, and very briefly, I have one question, but one comment, real quick. First of all, I doubt if there's anybody in labor, the community, this council, that thought it'd be Antonio Villagrosa would be standing here recommending these draconian actions, because it goes against the very green of your body and you and your soul. And it is not the Antonio Villagrosa that I think people knew and respected, but you're doing what you have to do, it's the fiduciary responsibility of the people, the 4 million people of this city. And so, I commend you on that, and I thank you for the conversations we've had. My question is this, they all hear the CAO recommendations, what you've said, that layoffs are a part of the equation, the things you've proposed that are contrary to what you believe in, quite frankly, but what they haven't heard is, how did we get to the point where this was the only option on the table? What were the things that have been rejected over time, and in a timeframe wider of those rejected at the moment they were, that left us with this as the only option?
Well, as an example, we raised the issue of increased pension contributions. I think Councilmember Rosendahl was one of the most fervent proponents of that. The EERC raised that issue, the CAO raised it in negotiations. That was a nonstarter, except to pay for the E-RIP. And even that initially was rejected and opposed. Layoffs, we were told, were a nonstarter. Cuts, other than deferrals, were nonstarters. What we were told, and what we've been told time and again, is that all of those things, particularly collectively, but individually, were declarations of war. And, being a peacemaker, we all, and I think all of us wanting to resolve this as quickly as possible, we decided on an E-RIP. And it was the best way to go under the circumstances. We cannot, that was last year's deficit that we addressed. We're still not, in fact, the original deficit. Now that deficit has grown, and next year's deficit is still looming, and we're all gonna have to go back. And we're gonna, and I think the grabberment of your question, we took too long. We all took too long. They took too long on their negotiations in saying no to virtually everything. We took too long in not making a tough decision, you know? And what I'm saying, in resolving this year's deficit and next year's, we cannot afford to let time continue to be our enemy. We have to act, act decisively, and act now.
Ms. Han?
Thank you. Well, I'm one of those that has been proposing certain taxes. I think we ought to put an oil extraction tax on, before the voters. There's no reason the oil companies are taking the oil from Los Angeles and not paying us something for it. I also think we just passed a medical marijuana ordinance. I think we ought to figure out how to get some revenue out of that, and I'm also proposing to put that on the ballot, so we can get some revenue. And I'll tell you, I am one of those, Mr. Mayor, and I said it before you got here today, that I just don't know how, in these times, we can talk about taking 1,000 people and laying them off. That will be 1,000 people who don't pay their mortgages, 1,000 people who don't put money into our economy, 1,000 people who don't keep their families afloat. And it seems to me we'd just be adding to this downward spiral of our economy, which I think we need for our recovery. But I will tell you, and you've said very clearly, you don't think we ought to keep saying no to things, and I think we're prepared to say yes to some things. But I will say, I have been talking about the collections issue for two years, and your departments kept saying, "No, no, no." Your Department of Finance said, "We can't open the RFPs, we can't have more collection data." They kept saying why we couldn't do it. Lately, I was the one that said, "Transfer, transfer, transfer." According to our city controller, there are 1,200 positions that are either specially funded or from our proprietary departments. Your general managers of your proprietary departments, one of them said, "We have zero jobs," the other one said, "Oh, we have eight." You know, I need your commitment, and that's my question. Can we have your commitment, that you will tell your general managers, "Now is the time to act," and that's unacceptable, that the Harvard Department said there were zero jobs, and the airport said there was 20. They need to be a part of the solution, and they cannot hide behind this thing that they're proprietaries and we have no business. We are in a city crisis, and your departments, your departments need to step up to the plate. I think we can do this without layoffs. I think it can be a matter of transfers and raising revenue to get out of this problem. But I need your, you need to tell your general managers, they need to quit saying no, not us.
I would ask you where in the charter it says that these departments are my departments? They're in fact, they're in fact, city departments, that, yes, it's true, I hire general managers, the council approves those managers. There are many opportunities, and you have certainly been among the most vigorous in overseeing those departments in your capacity as a chair. And so, just as you have said, and I think agree, that I have a responsibility here, we all have a collective responsibility to address this. And while I agree with you that these layoffs have a devastating effect on families, I have, I have reviewed this budget and the revenue projections for the future. I have done so with members of the council leadership, and the EERC, who all concur, that the options are limited, that the urgency of this crisis requires decisive and immediate action. And my hope is that if we're able to increase revenues in the way that you mentioned, by supporting initiatives on the ballot, increase the rate of projections of collections in the way that Councilmember Alakon spoke to, and I think that the city attorney will speak to in a few minutes, if we're able to generate even more concessions from civilian and sworn personnel, then my hope will be that we'll minimize the number of layoffs. Again, I see no scenario where we address a deficit of this magnitude without that. I had a conversation with our general managers where I made it very clear, in fact, I met with them separately, both the general managers of the port, the airport, and the Department of Water and Power, that I expected them to be aggressive in accepting these transfers. Yes, there was some concern, they have to operate their budgets as well, they have to, but I said that ultimately, I have a bigger responsibility. It's not just the operation of the airport, the port, and the Department of Water and Power, it's also making sure that we can minimize the numbers of people who are laid off, and the impact to the budget that comes with that. I thank you for your time, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, we really appreciate how generous you've been with your time, and thank you for coming to City Council. Thank you very much.